All right, it's eighteen hundred. Good evening, Commissioners, City Staff, Citizens and Stakeholders of DuPont. Welcome to the City of DuPont Planning Commission Meeting for the seventeenth of November, two thousand and twenty-five. For those attending for the first time and those listening in to YouTube and Zoom, my name is Jeff Foe, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is a body of volunteer citizens who serve as advisors to the Mayor and the City Council. Our delegated authority is to maintain the city's comprehensive plan and land use code consistent with the Washington Growth Management Act. Meetings of the Planning Commission are open public meetings, and they're being recorded. There is an opportunity for members of the community to address the Planning Commission. Instructions on how to make a public comment are on the city's website. Mr. Lade, would you please conduct the roll call?
Commissioner Chase.
Present.
Commissioner Thacker.
I have not received any communication from Commissioner Thacker.
Um, Chair Foe, I have, we were aware that Commissioner Thacker would not be attending this evening, and we ask for a motion to excuse him.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we excuse Commissioner Thacker.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion reference the motion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the motion is passed unanimously. Zach, if you'd continue.
Commissioner Broleson.
Present.
Vice Chair Scow.
Present.
Chair Foe.
Present, finally.
Commissioner Lynch.
Here.
Commissioner Colvin.
Present.
Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we would entertain any general public comments. Is there anybody in chambers that would like to address the Planning Commission? No. This is just general comments, anything that perhaps we have discussed in the past. Okay, seeing none, do we have anyone online that would like to make a public comment that is not related to the public hearing?
We have one person online ready, and let's see, do you have a comment?
No, I just got on, sorry, my apologies.
Nope, no apology necessary, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Next item of business would be approval of the agenda for the seventeenth of November, two thousand and twenty-five. It'd be appropriate for there to be a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion reference tonight's agenda? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as published for the seventeenth of November, two thousand and twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved unanimously. Next item is approval of the meeting minutes. It would be, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
Okay.
I'll second it to get it on the floor.
Okay, is there any discussion reference the meeting minutes for the twenty-seventh of October? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote then. All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes for the twenty-seventh of October as published, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the meeting minutes as published are approved. Next item is, I'm going to turn it over to Director Kim Kate, and she'll have a presentation for us.
Yes, thank you, and before we open the hearing, just a little bit of housekeeping here. The, the hearing, there are, I think there are some folks that are thinking that the hearing isn't going to start until six thirty. So I ask that we just hold off opening the hearing until six thirty. The agenda is, has item six, the public hearing, with six point one being the staff report, six point two, the complete plan draft. So I just want to explain this item six, agenda item six, a little bit is the, the staff report will be provided to you, and then when you open the hearing, I'm going to request that you enter the staff report that's in front of you and the packet in front of you into the record. I've got a presentation slide deck here to just sort of summarize that staff report. It was sent out to you, and it was made available to anyone who might be interested in reading it on our city webpage. The complete draft plan, which is the subject of the hearing this evening, that was also made public available on our webpage. And it is, you know, just, it is a rough draft of the plan. The, the idea is that we wanted to get this out to people as early as possible, to be able to have this proceeding early on. We recognize that there are, you know, there's missing table of contents, and, you know, there's things that are kind of goofed up in it in terms of grammar and spelling, and some of the maps didn't print out. But, but we did want, because the comprehensive plan is really a policy document, the policies are intact. The changes that we'll be going over and explaining this evening, they are what, they remain what the public has seen and what we are asking for folks to give testimony on this evening, with the anticipation, of course, that once you hear that testimony and close the hearing, then there may be additional changes, not, not only the formatting and grammar and all of that stuff, the table of contents, but also you may, as you talk, talk it through, may, may want to make additional substantive changes to that draft plan. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and give a presentation to you all. And, and I just feel free to stop and ask questions. I've invited two folks here from HBL, Patrick Kelly and Anisa Thachi. They have been working with me on drafting this all year, so they're also here, you know, to sort of help if we have certain questions on, on what you've read. It's, some areas are kind of data heavy, as you know, you've been doing this for a year now. And, and so I, you know, thought it might be a good idea, if we've got some questions outstanding, that we get those answered before the hearing opens, and that that may also help the public to understand a little better. You know, if they've, probably, if you have questions, they probably have the same questions or similar. So we'll go ahead with the, with the slide deck here for this evening before the hearing opens, and just kind of run through summary, this is summarizing the staff report that is accompanied with the draft plan for tonight's hearing. So, next slide. The proposal, and this hearing is to take testimony to amend the comprehensive plan. This is, this is our periodic update, that is required every ten years by the statute, the Growth Management Act statute, RCW thirty-six seventy-eight. We have an amendment process that we follow that's also been defined in the DuPont Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-five, one seventy. Next slide. So you all know what all these chapters are, but for the benefit of folks listening in or here today, and we do thank you for coming out tonight. The comprehensive plan is a, a policy document that contains these elements or chapters, and they're elements of sort of the, the environment, if you will, the, the city environment. So we have an introduction chapter, a background and context, a land use, economic development, natural environment, historic and cultural resources, parks and recreation, housing, transportation, capital facilities, and then the Old Fort Lake Sub area plan, which was its own standalone mini comp plan that is adopted into this citywide comp plan. And again, each of these chapters has a narrative section, and it has the goals and policies to go with it. Next slide. So just a little bit of history and background for those who, you know, we'll try not to make this too dry. But so again, as I said, the GMA has a required update every ten years cycle. We are able to amend our comp plan annually as we see fit, but the ten years is, is a requirement that you've got to look at it, and if needed, make changes. Well, there were changes that were needed, not, not changes that the city is directing so much as the state legislature has directed. So these legislative changes that have happened in the past cycles, twenty-one to twenty-three, as you know, have been pretty, pretty big things that we had to address in this periodic update. So you've got the House Bill twelve twenty, that talks about the step housing, which this is all about, emergency shelters, transitional, that sort of thing. You have the middle housing, House Bill eleven-ten, we spent a lot of time talking about that when we did our sub area plan. And of course, it has to be, it has to be citywide, not just in the sub area that we're, that we're showing that we're abiding by the House Bill eleven-ten, and that we're tier three city, they have different, based on populations, that we needed to require a minimum of two units per lot, identified types of allowed middle housing. So, and then we had the House Bill twelve ninety-three about the accessory dwelling units, and Senate Bill fifty-two ninety that's permitting timeline requirements. So the first three of these, maybe not so much the step housing, but in particularly eleven-ten and twelve ninety-three, the middle housing and ADUs, we've spent a lot of time in the sub area, so I think we have a pretty good background of, of what that's all about. And so extending that citywide in this comp plan update is, is what we have achieved here in this draft. The step housing, we'll go into that a little later on in this presentation. The permitting timeline requirements, we have goals and policies, but what you will see more of when we finish this, this update of the comp plan is coming in twenty-six, the, the regulations changing to, to, to implement these goals and policies. And what that means is you'll see the DuPont Municipal Code where we are adopting the permitting timeline requirements in our regulatory, regulation, our regulatory framework. And that's what that said at the bottom line, in a fewer words than what I just said, but next slide, please. So we just, a lot of process in our, in our planning world. We tried to make sure that we were thoughtful and deliberate, that we spent time, these public meetings, Planning Commission meetings, you know, we went through chapter by chapter and really did a very, you all did a very thorough job. We had a kickoff meeting in January of twenty-five, we held open houses, and I will say that the November fourth open house was a bust. We had five people, but that was because we didn't get all of the public messaging out correctly, and so people didn't know about it. So Friday on the fourteenth, we held another one, we had thirty-five people come, and it, and it was, you know, it was a good meeting, a good open house where we got the chance to talk to interested community members about our work tonight. We've had twenty meetings at the Planning Commission, as I said, all discussing all these different elements and proposed changes to those elements, and then also requirement to do CIPA, which is the State Environmental Protection Act, which we prepared checklist in August, put that out for public comment as required, that's a fourteen day comment period. We didn't receive any comments on the CIPA, the potential impacts to the environmental elements, and we issued a determination of non-significance on October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. So next steps, this is an important one because we've been, you know, our schedule has been very fluid, let's say. And from the last, actually even in the staff report that you saw, these dates are different now, and we will make sure those get posted. So we, this draft goes to Department of Commerce for their sixty day review and comment, as well as other state agencies. But it's Commerce that requires, well, it's, it's required to go out to all the other state agencies and, and agencies that may be affected by what we're doing here, but it's Commerce that reviews it and has a sixty day timeline to come back if they have anything that they think we missed the boat on. Planning Commission, we were, had talked about you all coming, you know, another meeting in November to try to deliberate after the close of this hearing, but really, I think it, it, it just makes sense to hold that on your regularly scheduled December eighth meeting, rather than cram, try to cram in another special meeting between now and, and then. City Council is tentatively scheduled to have its first reading on December sixteen. Your, your staff report says December nine, so that's been pushed back. Second reading and adoption wouldn't take place with the City Council until January twentieth, because at first part of the year, there's other things that the City Council has to conduct for business. And then this Puget Sound Regional Council, the PSRC, that isn't the agency, that's the regional planning agency that has to certify our comprehensive plan. So these are steps that we're still going through, and we're getting close to the finish line on it, though. Any questions on any of that before we go into the chapters?
No, ma'am, I think we're good.
Great. So just this overview on chapter one, as I said, that's the introduction, and that's where you see the vision statement. We didn't change the vision statement, we kept it, it was still viable and, and made sense. We did do guiding principles, though, which are new, so that we could think more about the goals and policies in this version of the plan, as well as future amendments we may make, to think about these principles, these overarching themes that would apply throughout all the policies and actions the city takes. And so these are values that are looking at economic prosperity, well-being, environment, the health of the environment, equity, sustainability, and resiliency. And the plan talks a little bit about what those guiding principles are under each of those different themes. So chapter two is very data heavy, it's the background and context, it's the historic development patterns, land use influences and constraints, population characteristics, so lots of demography and, or not demography, but demographics and current land uses, housing jobs, housing and employment growth and capacity. So all of that chapter two is really looking at what was and what has changed, and what do we do about it when we start kind of underpinning for the, the goals and policies and the, in the elements? So I'm not going to go through a lot of this, but this is just sort of showing you some of the data that's in chapter two and the key findings in it. So, you know, we look at growth rate, we look at population actual to projected, and I think what is, what has really been troubling for a lot of people is that our population growth really hasn't, hasn't done much. And even in, you know, when you, typically you're planning for growth and you use these growth projections. But in our case, we had, you know, the growth target that was, we were supposed to adopt and show that we have capacity in this plan, which the growth target for two thousand and forty-four comes out of the Puget Sound Regional Council, it goes through Pierce County, it gets distributed, is actually more than what we would have historically projected through the census. And I know that's really hard, been hard for people to be like, well, why, but it's, it's just the way it is, and we are required to plan for that number. So we looked at ethnicity, and again, this is just all sort of trying to set the table to have a discussion about the goals and policies and the needs for the DuPont residents as we understand it today. So ethnic profile indicates the majority of our population are white people, but there is a strong representation of other ethnic, there's a missing in there, ethnic groups. Okay, so the next slide, we look at, you know, the, the different types of employment in our city, and, you know, the employment profile shows on that left graph. We've got, we've got a wide range of professions, we have a large portion of the population being in education and healthcare, and the third is public administration. So the jobs in DuPont have grown, and you can see that below between this American Consumer Survey five-year estimate is the source on that bottom one, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and twenty, you see the job growth. Of course, nineteen ninety-five is, you know, we were pretty small, we were just a village then, but now you see, even from two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty, the, the job growth that we've had in DuPont. So then we look at what kind of housing do we have, and that's what this chart is, this pie chart on the left. And the takeaway there is most of our housing is still single-family detached, sixty-four percent, which is actually lower than what you see in other communities. A lot of other communities go, their single-family homes are usually even a greater part of the housing stock. So that's something that is noteworthy for us, but we still, we still are predominantly single-family housing here. So then the next chapter, three, is the land use chapter. And really, in the land use, so our intent here was to take all those legislative changes and really focus, because we didn't have a lot of time, really focus on making sure that in this update, as required, we were meeting those, those new mandates in this plan. So what that means is we didn't, we didn't do a lot of changes, other than making sure that the plan is now consistent with the new, new state laws. You know, we were pretty conservative about the changes that we made to it, especially like in future land use. We did more, more policy work, I think, than anything else to just try to strengthen certain goals and policies. And the land use chapter, it's, you know, clarifying that intent and adding more specific wording about addressing and planning for growth, promoting public health, safety, and welfare, making sure that the development is going to be enhancing the city's neighborhood, and providing street system for all modes, promoting equal, community equity and culture, and enhancing the environment. So the land use, these policy, overarching policy direction that you see in this chapter are also intertwined throughout all of these other chapters, and they hopefully are, are consistent with those guiding principles that I mentioned in the very beginning. So housing and employment growth, this is where you see the discussion about these growth targets. So two thousand and twenty population, ten thousand one hundred and fifty-one, employment five thousand three hundred and nine, and housing units thirty-seven ninety-one. Well, that, that middle column here where it talks about the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and forty-four growth targets, and again, I, I, remember, this is a twenty, twenty-year long-range plan, but it's not supposed to be static. So what we're doing is we're required to plan for twenty years using those growth targets, and that's where you see this two thousand and twenty to two thousand and forty-four, is we are showing in this updated plan how we are going to meet the growth targets of an additional five thousand one hundred and eighty-four persons, one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven jobs, and two thousand ninety-six housing units. So the two thousand and forty-four total is there on that right, far right column. And so that's what we have done in this plan. So the requirement that we plan for those projected needs is, is, is all there in those bullets, and that's what you'll see as you start reading through, as you already have read through the chapters and if folks are listening in or, or diving into this draft plan, that's kind of for them to think about that. That's what we had to do, and that's what we achieved in this update. So housing capacity, this is a little chart that talks about the area medium income, things like PSH, the permanent supportive housing. This is a chart that is from Commerce, and it is to illustrate the legislation on that step housing on that. We're not talking about the middle housing, we're talking about the need for housing for the extremely low, very low, low and moderate, and, and looking at those income bands as a percentage of the area medium income. So, and that's the House Bill twelve twenty. So we're required to plan for and accommodate housing for all economic segments of the population. So that was running through our work in this, in the land use and housing primarily, you see that in, you know, really coming up to the forefront in terms of the, the goals and policies in those. This is the future land use map. Now, this is what people get really excited about, you know, maps, and what am I zoned for? So all of the, all of the words in this plan to a lot of people are a lot, just a lot of words. But when they get to the map, then they see things. So the, we call it the future land use map, or the flume, is the, basically the mapping or illustration of all of those words implemented in this. And it's, it's again, future land use designation, and what you do with that is it, it becomes, translates into the zoning map, just like these goals and policies will be translated and implemented into the DuPont Municipal Code regulations. So we haven't done that yet, that'll be our next step, but the, again, the flume is, is, is geographically showing the distribution of these different development types and densities. And so we'll go in, and that's part of this comp plan as well, so we'll go into that a little more. We have changed, we've changed the use designation names, but we haven't really changed anything. So I think, I think you have slides in here about that. Maybe not. I guess I'll just speak to that slide then. Could you go back one slide? So some of the things, and I, I think there's a slide that talks of this, but since we're on this map and we're all looking at it. So we have created a civic designation, that is new, it didn't exist before. And the civic designation is to show people where, where where there are public or quasi-public land uses such as city hall, our water towers, our schools. And why we believe that to be important is it was missing before and we have run into, you know, situations where the parking, you know, the big lot across the street here where we are anticipating someday having a community center. We wanted that to be designated for civic use. We wanted to be able to, to have the, the use types and the the, the regulations, the design standards and all of that for that particular use, which we didn't have that. So that is one, one change. Parks and Recreation, we kind of condensed that, the open space. Those are, those are very similar to what you would see in the existing plan, but what, what you will notice is very different in this map from the adopted comp plan map now is it mirrored the zoning map identical in terms of the residential zones. We didn't change the density or the use type. We just compressed them in the flume so that you had all the residential lower to medium residential is called a low, medium density residential before you had the R3, R4. So it's, so the zoning map still shows that because that's appropriate to show that on the zone. But this is showing that this, these areas are designated for this type of residential use. Same with the high density multifamily residential. It was, we had an R12. Our zoning map has an R12, still has an R12. But in this case, we, we're calling it a, a land use designation for high density residential. That gives us flexibility because if, when we're going through our zoning map update or our development regulations, we feel that we need to kind of maybe create some extra zones in these categories. We can do that without coming back and amending the comp plan. So the mixed use, we have a mixed use one and a mixed use two. We're just calling it mixed use now. And the commercial remains the same as does the MRP and the industrial. So the, the, those were, they, they looks, it doesn't really look different, but the legend looks different, but it's really the same thing with the exception of adding that civic designation that we didn't have. So the changes, so I said, we didn't do many changes in the actual land use and that is very true. And this is showing you the, the, what that looks like. So we took on the left side, you will see the across the little inset of the adopted flume and we're really focusing on Manchester Place and Center Drive. It's labeled as two. And that is currently designated and zoned for manufacturing research park. That's that land that the school district owns. And then we had somebody that Bridge wanted to come in and do a warehouse and it has had multiple interests. In my tenure, a people wanting to negotiate a sale with the school district to build warehouses, a warehouse only because it's in allowed use right now, only to discover that it's not suitable for a warehouse. And then they'd walk away because it's, it's constrained by the oak. It's constrained by critical areas, the wetlands. It's just, just not a good spot. So we're proposing to change that land use designation and then would also, if this passes, update the zoning map to change that to be a residential, a high density multifamily residential. So with the thought that you could maximize your housing there on a smaller footprint, which means you would be, have a better chance of you know, condensing that footprint and avoiding the oak and the sensitivity buffers that are there. You also see numbers, little circle with a number one and a three. That didn't change, but that is a housekeeping. So at Center Drive and Williamson Place, the zoning map was changed to make that commercial, but the flume was never updated. So that's, would be updated in this one. These are tiny maps, but these are trying to show you existing and proposed. And changing kind of what I went over with lots of these little circles, but specifically changing, you know, the change, the civic designation for city hall, fire department, police facilities. Change to, you know, the civic to any planned, like the community center area where it's planned. The additional civic for the planned school site at Patriots Landing, which we've already talked about. And the other thing on number four that I didn't mention is Patriots Landing. That is circled with a little four there, but Patriots Landing was zoned for R4 residential, but when the master plan was approved, it's now high density residential is planned for apartments. So we thought that it would be the right thing to do to update this flume. So people wouldn't look at apartments there when they're built out and look at the map and say, well, how did the apartments get there when it was supposed to be? You know, the R, the R4, R5. Changing the civic on these, on the map would be for the public existing the parcels that are not zoned or designated civic for the water tower site. So that is just a repeat of what we just talked about, but it's a little shows you where that is. So that's chapter three. So again, very few changes to the land use. It's more like trying to clarify other than that civic and, and changing that. The Manchester property, which I will tell you that I had conversations with the school district and they were supportive of, of doing that. Chapter four, economic development chapter. We have goals and policies that are supposed to support the, you know, economic growth and stability. It's, there's a discussion of strategies for economic development such as the mixed use projects, expanding and retaining, retaining local businesses. In this chapter, you'll find discussion about the city's financial management, business and employment. The city's economic assets, the workforce and employment targets. So the policy direction in chapter four for economic development is really to try to achieve a balance between the equity, economic development and the environmental health. So you see a lot of, a lot of the goals and policies under those goals that are really trying to focus on how do we achieve that balance? Recognizing that the city needs economic development, but it needs to be done in a way that is sustainable and doesn't destroy our resources and our assets. You also see the strengthening and integrating of regional transportation infrastructure improvements as an economic development policy. And encouraging more variety of marketing and tourism efforts. And I know I had at the open house, I did have discussions about economic development and some thought that we could do a lot more. And I will say, we can do a lot more. And so again, I'm just going to keep reiterating over and over again, this, what you, what, what leaves here, what gets adopted from city council is not the end, it's the beginning of, of keeping this work ongoing and focusing on these different areas and chapters that we feel like we need to work, work more on and just really being able to focus instead of trying to do a whole, a whole plan update. So this slide just shows you the sources of revenue, sales tax, property tax. And it's again, it's just kind of trying to help set the stage, understand the economy of our city. That retail, retail, retail sales tax collection is a, a large component of revenue, which we have 12 top industries showing up in this, but you know, with sales tax being such a, a big deal, I mean, that speaks to trying to really work on diversification of our economy and, and trying to figure out what we, how we can, how we can get more economic development in the city that fits our vision and, and goals. Economic assets, you see this in the economic development chapter as well, you know, transportation warehousing, oops. And I slipped my slide here. Anyway, we can, there it is. And, and talks about the economic assets of the joint base Lewis McCord, which is, is a huge, which is a huge influence in our economy here in DuPont and how we can think about them as a partner and coordination. We, we do that now, but again, I think we probably could think about ways to do more of that in the future. Next slide. So chapter five, the natural environment is the next chapter of the plan. That's where you see the inventory of the critical areas in our city. So things like streams, wetlands, the shoreline, the, the geology, the soil, soils, all of those natural features. We discuss, have policies, goals and policies that are really relating to conserving those natural resources. The energy, fish and wildlife habitat areas. So a lot of these, they are protected by state law under the SEPA, but there are things that the local government can do. And so we really wanted to make sure that we were strengthening environmental protections and improving. One, one of the areas is the city's tree canopy. We know that they, we didn't have, we could do more, but we didn't have anything in our existing comp plan that really recognized the importance of the tree canopy for providing and protecting our air quality and our runoff. And I mean, it goes on and on, the benefit of, of the tree canopy. So that is some new policy direction in this chapter. The historic and cultural resources element, chapter six, gives a brief history, outlines our guiding concepts for cultural resources. It has the goals and policies to protect those cultural and historical resources as the city develops, you know, and to be able to not just preserve them and protect them, but to promote them as leverage for, for tourism, for people to come. And also to remember, for people to remember our, you know, our own human belonging here in DuPont. So we did add new policies that are intended to really capitalize on that historic and cultural resource. Enhancing the local education and tourism. And, and, and the one that I'm actually have always wanted to have time to spend is to, to develop a program that would really be able to identify the cultural and historical assets. We have our DuPont Historical Museum. And we have our, you know, historical society folks that have done a great job. We need to figure out how we can take their work and fold that designation process into our comp plan and be able to then move that in the direction of, into our regulatory framework. We don't have that yet, but we did do, we took baby steps here, I think, and at least we, we built in some stronger policies in this round. Chapter seven, parks and recreation. Now that's, there's a whole park standalone park plan that was adopted last year, the post plan, the parks, recreation, open space and trails. It includes all of the, the information that we didn't have to duplicate in this chapter. The inventory of the existing parks, you know, the, the projected need to provide for a growing population. Six year capital improvement program and what, what we would need to build to be able to keep these level of park level of service standards up where we want them to be in this plan. And then it has goals and policies that are just in support of that post plan. Chapter eight, housing element. You see a lot of different things here simply because there's so much of the legislation that we were working with for compliance in this plan was really focused on housing. So we've got household characteristics. We've got the city share of the regional housing targets, addressed goals and policies that we have to show the land capacity, but how do we preserve? How do we improve and develop more housing to comply with that? What, do we have the land capacity? And so how do we align with these goals for affordable housing that are in House Bill 1220? Planning for and accommodating housing for all income levels, the middle housing is there. So that's, this chapter has probably a lot more text changes, goals, policies and text changes because of all of the, the legislation that we needed to, to plan for. And so this is just explaining, it's kind of that little nifty graph, the 2096 new homes for the various income levels over the next 20 years that we're supposed to show that, that we have capacity for. And what does that look like when you break it down into the targets for these different types, these different housing, excuse me, different income bands. And so what this shows you is what our target numbers are that we worked with so that we were able to come out in the end and say, yes, we have enough land capacity. And the ability for these different types of income level product to be built here in DuPont. Obviously we don't build them, but we are making sure that we have the ability to, to support those being built. And that all comes down to then again, that housing capacity. So I'm not going to go over that again. It's pretty much just another way that's showing you that at the end of the day, for these different income bands, you see that we have the capacity which exceeds our requirement for all of those. And so that was a real relief actually. Because at first, when I saw these numbers, I wasn't sure how we were going to manage, but we were able to do it. Chapter nine is the transportation element and it is very, very long and very dry. But it's also extremely important as we know. So it, it looks at all of the conditions, existing conditions of our transportation. The forecast, the modeling, the future transportation, the level of service standards. All of this analysis with recommendations to define the, you know, the future transportation need. I would say that the thing that, that we have done, this is another thing that we did, not because the state made us do it, but because we really wanted to do it, was to, to develop this multimodal network. Our plan currently is really only looking at level of service standards and an interest in how to move vehicles through the city. But this plan now creates different layers. So it's not just motor vehicles. It's also pedestrians and bicycle freight and transit. So that multimodal means all of these travel modes are now being considered in this plan and being looked at through the lens of what are the appropriate ways to think about level of service? And where did we see gaps where that we weren't meeting that? And then defining those areas and those projects to achieve that in the future as we grow and develop. So maintaining the existing system, filling in the gaps of the non-motorized network for pedestrian sidewalks, trails. And you see project list in the plan for that. So here's just a nice little graphic that, you know, the, making investments in our system. And it's important, not just from the budgeting side for the city to look at. It's also a tool for making sure that, you know, future development is aware of what is, would be required for them to make sure if their development drops any of those service standards below, then, then they would be required to, to, to pay for the improvements that are needed to bring that up to a level. That being said, anything that is already deficient, it's on the city. So we want to know that too. Comprehensive plan overview. Yeah. So this is just another transportation. Where are the modal deficiencies in the future and currently? Just like I described, we, we want to know what we have currently, where we're deficient currently, because that's on us. And then we want to know in the future where the deficiencies would be, because then, you know, that's on, that's on the new developer. How do we measure that? And what projects are we planning and prioritizing? So, we have 28 automobile in the plan, 28 projects for cars, nine projects for pedestrian and six for our bike network. And that's the map that shows them all. And we won't, we won't go over that, but it's in the plan for people that are interested in looking at it. It's a very nice map that really shows you this 20-year horizon of what we believe would be needed as we grow, if we reach that population number. Chapter Ten, Capital Facilities and Utilities. This is important to, again, you've got a lot of data in it, the inventory of all of our current capital facilities owned by public entities. So, what does the city own, our police, our fire, our city administration, the private and public utilities? So, it's just really, as it sounds, facilities and utilities, understanding all of those services, the provision of all of those services that we need in cities, the inventory, the location, and then making sure that the goals and policies are in place that, that show that as growth occurs, we're maintaining these level of service that need to be met so that the existing population are not finding that, because of growth, now they don't have, they don't have the infrastructure or the service provisions that they, that we recognize need to be available. So, this also has, excuse me, a six-year plan on how to finance those capital facilities. The six-year plan, the, for capital facilities, utilities, parks and transportation, that is a requirement of the GMA. So, the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and a budget, list of projects and budget is required, and we have met that obligation in this plan. So, showing the funding capacities, identifying the sources of funds for these purposes. So, policy direction, you know that growth pays for growth. City has the, the ability to understand its own needs for the current population and anticipates those and has a way to budget for those to make sure that we're keeping up. If things are wearing out or breaking or something, that we're thinking about how we replace them, repair them so that the level of service and the needs are continually met for our existing residents. So, Decisional Criteria, this kind of goes through the, as I said in the beginning of this, the DuPont Municipal Code shows the framework for how we amend our comprehensive plans. That is one of the first chapters I really want to redo in the new year because it's all over the place. But what we are showing you here is the analysis of the different criteria, whether the capacity provide adequate services is diminished or increased. We talk about that we've met our assigned growth targets in housing and population and jobs, and that these policies provide, ensure that the future growth is providing adequate level of service. So, then we see B, it's coming out of 25, 170, 100 criteria. Decisional criteria is the growth and development are occurring at a faster rate than what was envisioned? And no, the answer is no, it is not. However, because we have these targets that are assigned to us, they have a higher envisioned growth than what's really occurring. So, we had to accommodate that, and this plan does that. C, again, is in the DMC, DuPont Municipal Code, Decisional Criteria, the ability of land to meet demand. And we talk here in our analysis that the Buildable Lands Report from Pierce County, it is required to be done countywide in the cities, and the city of DuPont participated in that. That's where we look at the capacity that you'll see in this plan. We, you know, the Old Fort Lake Subarea, after amending that, was able to add the assigned additional housing units. So, that's where this increased capacity was achieved largely through the Old Fort Lake Subarea Plan. D and E were not really applicable as they are written in the DMC. And then F, a determination that sufficient change or lack of change in circumstances dictate the need for a recommended amendment. So, this one was required. Now, this is the decisional criteria that we will be looking at if we did an annual amendment, because we'd have to ask ourselves, why did, why did we feel like we needed to amend the plan? But in this case, because it's the required GMA update, it didn't, it didn't really apply either. G, Decisional Criteria, G is a determination of that consistency exists between this comprehensive plan, the GMA statute in 3670A, county-wide planning policies for Pierce County, Vision 2050, which is the Puget Sound Regional Council's, you know, big multi-county vision. And so, in looking at this and the analysis is that, yes, it does. Conclusion here is that based on the need for the comprehensive plan to accommodate growth targets assigned by Pierce County, the provision of the policies to assure adequate levels of service to support the anticipated growth, the identified capacity in this proposal meets the growth targets. And therefore, you know, we conclude that it is, we would recommend that the Planning Commission transmit recommendation of adoption to the city council. That is a summary of the comp plan. And there's more detail in the staff report that I handed out to you, the 13-page staff report. So, with that, I would encourage you to open the public hearing chair.
Okay. Before I do that, I just have a couple of housekeeping things to go over. So, planning commissioners, does anybody have any conflicts of interest or appearance of fairness doctrine concerns related to the comprehensive plan that might prohibit our participation in the public hearing process? Okay, seeing none. At 18:55, 6:55 PM, for those that tell time that way, I'll open the public hearing. And I still have a couple of rules of engagement to go through. So, just give me a second and then we'll start. So, all comments tonight will be made from the podium, unless you're online, and then, of course, they'll come via YouTube. When you go up to make a public comment, if you'd also state your name and your city of residence. Any comments made from any other location could be considered as out of order, and the speaker could be subject to removal. If you're disabled and require accommodation, please speak up and let staff know so that we can take appropriate steps to accommodate you. There are, there shall be no demonstrations during the presentation. And these rules are intended to provide and promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing. And so, that no individual is embarrassed by exercising his or her free right of speech. So, with that, the first thing I'll do is, ma'am, would you like to enter your presentation into the public hearing?
Yes, Chair, if I could, enter this presentation and the staff report in, into the record. Thank you.
Okay, so enter. Next item, do we have the list of names of those individuals that would like to speak?
No, we do not. And I think that maybe we could just have folks line up and go up to the podium as they, as they wish.
Yep, that's acceptable. All right, so is there anyone in chambers who would like to make a public statement? Come on up to the podium and please just state your name and city of residence and provide your comment. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your city of residence.
My, my name is Beth Elliott. I live in DuPont. And I'm here tonight as a resident and not as a city council member. I just want to make that really clear. And like Renee, you know, I just want to thank you all for all your hard work, all your dedication, all the evenings that you have spent here volunteering, because this is a critical document, and it really defines, it guides our, our growth for the next 10 years. So, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do. Now, of course, I do have a few suggestions that I hope you will consider before you vote on the final draft. Timelines are important and words matter. Please consider adding timelines after each goal, policy and action statement. Timelines are present in the transportation and capital facility segments, but there are none in the other segments. And timelines help us manage resources effectively. They provide structure and they allow for the tracking of progress. How do we measure where we are if we don't have them? As an example, you might want to look at Gig Harbor's comp plan or Puyallups, because they provide excellent examples of looking at timelines, and they're a quick read. Please also consider using stronger words in the goals rather than using the word ensure. Perhaps consider establish, establish, confirm or maintain. And more specifically, under the Parks and Recreation Section in Goal Five, Number Two, where it says aspire to conduct a tree canopy assessment, just say, conduct a tree canopy assessment. Citizens have learned the hard way. Many of us spoke out against the warehouse that will be constructed near the top of Sequelto Creek. We lost because of the word abut. That was in our comp plan, and a but wasn't clearly defined. So, words matter. Strong, precise words matter because they provide clarity, and timelines help us manage our progress. So, thank you for listening, and thank you again for all the work that you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in chambers would like to make a comment? Please state your name and your city of residence.
Bridget King, DuPont. So, I scratched notes on three things. I have some detailed stuff, but I want to echo what Beth said about timelines. I think in working on all the climate action stuff I've been doing, that the SMART goal format is, I don't know if we've, I don't know where the measurable goals come in, but I've been looking at this stuff since 1996, and there are still things in there that aren't done. And so, I think timelines are important and the action verbs at the beginning. And so, I will take example of the canopy one. You know, I think if we say, and that's one I had worked on, is, is to say, you know, we're going to use partnerships with DNR, whatever, and establish a strategy to conduct the canopy survey with, and I'm going to come to this, too, with volunteers and education from other organizations, but just more like what it would look like and when we plan to be at what's, like have a strategy by January. But I know this is a long-range plan, so I want the canopy to be a short-range goal. And back to the volunteers, which is, I looked at so many comprehensive plans for climate chapters, which is really what I would like to have next. One of the things I noticed when I was going through ours, and it just jumped out at me actually tonight when I was going back through it, is lots of other plans have goal-oriented activities for community involvement. And I think, you know, we're, we're financially frugal city. And what they did in these other places is separate the financial requirement type of activity from the volunteer activity. So, that you're moving on the two separate timelines for things that are unfunded versus things you can do through volunteers. And any volunteering encourages community involvement, which is what we all want. And so, on that line, somewhere in there, I would have liked to have seen the establishment of a volunteer coordinator under parks or canopy or under the city, somewhere that that be a goal, and whether that person is paid or a volunteer volunteer coordinator. I, I don't know. But I see the two threads coming together. And so, you have these things that you can do with volunteers, but they're, they're backed up with financial stuff. And so, that's something that's probably too late, and it didn't come to me until I was looking at it and looking at the analysis I had done of other plans, is to make our volunteer, community involvement actions separate, separate goals. Under the Cultural Resources, I would have wanted to see a, again, stronger verbs and actions, establishing an interagency Cultural Resources Board, then conduct a Cultural Resources Inventory, and later create the programming or the, and separate, again, the community involvement piece as a goal to get people involved in our history, but having the other thread, because the museum does a great job of causing community involvement and holding lectures and education, but having the formal part where we have the tribe and we have history, and we have all the players here, parks, preservation is nature and history, but how that all comes together as our cultural resources. So, I would have liked to have seen that. I would like to see all of the cultural assets that exist and are known to the public listed. So, the Buffalo Soldier bivouac site is signed already, so that doesn't need to be hidden. And it's amazing how many people discover what we have from going through these documents. So, I just think if it's not one of the, I think there's four of them that are hidden, but the rest of them should all be listed in the document to keep them in the public view. And the vision statement for me always should have, I know you like the one, it's the Model City, that was talking about the original DuPont Palisades Village. We haven't continued quite with that plan. So, that was a model neo-urban city. But what we are now, I hope, is intentionally walkable and treed. And I'd really like to see that added, so that's my two cents on that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in chambers? Mr. Lade, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
We'll have Rady online, they'd like to make a comment.
Ma'am, can you hear us? If you'd like to make a comment, just state your name and your city of residence, and then make your comment. If you'd like to make a comment, just state your name and your city of residence and then make your comment.
Okay, I think we can go on.
Okay, so not hearing any comments, we'll go ahead and make the assumption that they do not wish to make any comment. All right. Any questions from the commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
If you would want to close the hearing, if there are no further comments by the public or no further testimony by the public, then it would be appropriate to do a, you know, discussion if you so desired.
Okay. So at 19:08, I'll close the public hearing. And one more time, commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Chase.
I just thank the audience for participating in the public hearing. It's nice to see comments being made from the public versus oftentimes, I've witnessed public hearings where nobody from the public says anything. And then, of course, there's a whole bunch of comments after something passes. So I thank you for your comments.
Commissioner Colvin.
Yeah, I too appreciate the comments, and one of the things I greatly appreciate about it is oftentimes we have a public hearing and people will come up and they will voice the problems, but that's as far as they go. Tonight, you all voiced some problems and then solutions to those problems, so greatly appreciate that.
Vice Chair Scal.
Same. I appreciate all the involvement and I appreciate the comments and the knowledgeable comments too. There's quite a few of you out there who probably know way more than the rest of us up here, so we appreciate that. And the one thing I do like to point out with some of these comments, they were, some of them I feel are, well, all of them have really good merit, but the nice thing, as pointed out, is that because this document is fluid and the fact that it's been a very intense two years for us up on these. And so there have been probably a lot of things that maybe didn't get the attention we would like to. But the nice thing is I see things on here that next year, when hopefully the dust has settled and we have a chance to take a breath, we can maybe go back and revisit and give it credence and good thorough discussion to. So while maybe some of these won't be implemented in this document that we submit now, there's something that we can go back and look at with a more in-depth and seriousness. I feel like some of these have some really good points we need to look at, but most likely, they won't be looked at with the intent, with the intent it should be before we send the document, but we can do it next year and give it its due diligence and research and the right way to do it. Thank you very much for the comments and for, you know, putting your input. We appreciate it.
And if I might add, I mean, that's a good discussion, you know, segue into how how I would recommend that we proceed with that. And it's very good practice for Planning Commission to set a docket in the first part of the year that where we decide how much work we can actually do and prioritize that work. And I think that that might be a good way for us to approach some of these great things that we heard tonight, that we maybe just don't have the capacity to get done before the end of this year.
Real quick, and was there anything that was, that you brought up? You said you had like 35 people show up. Was there anything that you felt we should, that you could share with us that we haven't already discussed?
Yeah, it was, you know, I will say that most people, well, I had an insert of the subarea zoning, because I didn't, we had, you know, the zoning, the land use map, and you know how you see the big blank area of the subarea. I thought, well, there's going to be people that are going to want to know what's in there. And so I think that a lot of, unfortunately, while I was trying to be helpful, that detracted a lot of attention. And so we had a lot of discussion about the subarea, which is already adopted. So, and then we had a lot of, I think it was just a time, the people that I talked to, it just felt like it was a good time for people to come in and talk about what is going on in the city, not focused really so much on the comp plan, except for that we need to have, our natural environment chapter needs to have contour maps, and then usually they do. So that was, that was one thing that came out of it, and I'm glad that you heard it tonight as well. You know, just a lot of interest, like what's going to happen at the State Farm property and what's going to, you know. But, so it was more general discussion and it wasn't really, even though we shared a lot of what we went over tonight in this staff report about what's in the comp plan. And people, you know, were listening to that, but not much comment came out of it.
Any other comments? Okay, jumping back to the agenda. So this is an opportunity, another opportunity for public comments, not related to the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to make a general comment? Anybody online would like to make a general comment? Okay, hearing none. Planning Commissioners, one last chance at alibis. Okay, hearing none. All right. Speak now. Okay, so staff, ma'am, thank you for a great presentation. Mr. Lade, thank you again, as always, for keeping us straight, keeping the technology working. Our friends at AHBL, thank you for all you do. We appreciate the heavy lifting that you're doing. And so thank you very much. And most importantly, thanks to the citizens of DuPont for participating in the process. That goes a long ways. And so with that, I'll close the meeting at 19:15. You all have a wonderful night. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.